All right, good evening, everyone. Tonight is the January 22nd, 2024. Town of Kingston Select Board Meeting. We will start off the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, let's go down the agenda. We'll start off with the Committee Liaison Reports. Ellie. Okay. Glenn?
I think only one committee that I'm involved with met between last time and now, and that was the Heritage Commission. And happy to report that they have put together a mailing, and I'm going to hand out copies. This is the letter that went with each of the... Laurie, you probably got yours in the mail.
I... It might be in the mailbox.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
And what this is, is an effort to educate homeowners who have older properties in town, not just the ones in the historic district, although they were included in the mailing.
Yeah.
Just to let them know that the town back in the eighties did an inventory of older homes, anything older than... I forget what the year was, but there are over 300 of them.
Yeah, so yeah, I saw the email notice go out, or the notification that people that lived within the districts would get these.
Right.
And they said they were even at, you know, if people wanted to give input on any historic information about their home that they may not know.
Right. So the town actually owns some historic properties, and so this envelope is for someone here at the town. Maybe Susan can hang on to them. But so in addition to the letter that you've got a copy of, the Heritage Commission made a copy of the actual inventory sheet for the properties and sent it along with it to the homeowners.
Okay.
And it has all the... This was an inventory done by Lynn Monroe out of Kensington back in the eighties. And a lot of research was done, a lot of history of each home, picture to go along with it. And so it... Kind of an educational process for homeowners, just to let them know what's what with their old house. And that mailing was just stuffed and put into the mail earlier this week, or late last week, late last week. So they'll be hitting... They should be hitting homes. Any... Yeah, yeah. Susan, I assume that Bob must have brought them in to your office maybe, or somewhere?
Who brought them in when they were prepared?
Well, no, when they were all done.
Oh, the mail?
Yeah. Oh, well, maybe they went to somebody else.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. So that was a good activity. It had been on their to-do list for a while. They've been working on it, and now it's done, so.
Oh, good. Okay. For me, the last planning board meeting got delayed due to the weather, so that one got postponed. So nothing new to update there, and nothing new to update with the police department. Chuck?
Well, obviously being out for the last six weeks, I don't have a whole lot of new stuff. And I would like to thank everybody for kind of covering for me for anything that they had to go up with, with the few liaisons that I'm for. But I will say that I did do one, because Conservation had theirs virtually during COVID. I guess apparently most of the board had COVID, so she had it virtually. So I was able to do that one. And I think with them there, the thing they're starting to look at is with our new projects, Schinberg property as far as what the water problem... Not what the water problem, but you know, where the water is there, that they normally look at with rental pools. And there is a stream that runs there. So as that project sounds like it's starting to develop, and maybe in the springtime, and then just chatting a little bit about some of the other housing projects that we have coming in. Ian talked a little bit about the maintenance that they've done over the course of the summer and fall with all the trails, which I guess are in very good shape. So that was what they had. But again, thanks, everybody, for covering for me. Hopefully after tomorrow, we won't have to worry about that.
Perfect. Yeah, glad to hear. Yeah. Lori?
So like everyone else, mostly, most of the committees haven't met yet. We did have to not open the collection center on Saturday. Phil made the call because it was so cold.
It was the right call.
Yeah, we had to, you know, safety of the volunteers first, right? So the next time it's open is the third, which is the deliberative session. And Phil and I are actually trying to set up a meeting with Pete from Waste Management just to kind of go over some stuff with the collection center and the agreement that they have. So we're trying to get that on the books, but other than that.
Do you open early on in nine o'clock, or it's nine o'clock?
It's nine to 12. The workers are there earlier because we have to set up the cones and open the gate and stuff like that. But we're not technically open to the public until nine.
So if the next one is on the date of the deliberative session, what does that mean?
That... I'm just saying, that means I won't be there, Phil won't be there, but it'll be open unless, again, there's a weather situation, but it'll be open.
Okay.
Because we have, you know, our three or four core volunteers, and Phil has a couple of folks from the Public Works Department that... Because we have to have somebody from Public Works there, so.
All right. I can, yeah. I stopped in and I talked with Pedro this morning, our new building inspector code enforcement officer. So I did kind of touch base with him today. I know we had discussed, obviously, we want to make sure that heavily involved with them. So I would kind of like there to be a secondary liaison right now during this period because of the fact that I can't stop by every day. But I think it would be appropriate to have somebody, you know, somebody who has a little bit more time on their hand that's going to be in the town hall regularly just in case he has any questions right now. I just, I want to make sure that we've had some issues with this position in the past, and we're trying to build and create a lot of stuff. I just want to make sure they have a lot of guidance. So anyone who else is willing to step into that role that thinks that they could be here kind of regularly to at least check in with him on a daily basis or be available to come in on a daily basis if he needed to be, I'd be, I'd be open to any volunteers that would be... And I would work that liaison partnership with them.
I mean, I have the time.
Well, I mean, one of the things that I... I know Paula had mentioned it in thinking about, you know, who might be the person, and someone who might be familiar, reasonably familiar with the ordinances and the regulations might be helpful. When Glenn Greenwood is downstairs in the office, he certainly is a good resource for Pedro. But I mean, I'm happy to participate in this. I did stop in. I spent about an hour with Pedro this morning. Laurie was here, and then when I came here, she left. I spent some time talking with Pedro and... Okay, okay. All right, good, good. But the three of us, Tori and Pedro and I spent some time together just talking about how, you know, getting him started, getting him going. And of course, Paula worked with him to get all of his paperwork done, and his computer all set up and phone. And so he's... I think he's going to be off and running.
So I have a couple of questions, comments. Is it unreasonable to maybe take a picture and introduce Pedro on the website so people know who the inspector is? Is that something that we've done before? So then that way...
I put his name, I changed the names, but I thought I'll add to maybe a picture.
A picture, a really brief bio and say, here's our... Because when I was there...
Yeah, even put it on the landing page for now for the website under like news, like announcements of, hey, this is the town's new building inspector, if you see him around.
Because when, at eight... I was here at eight, and two people stopped in. They saw the door open and they jumped on it.
Yeah.
And he was able to... A gentleman had a question about some property, some land that... And Pedro, because he came in on Friday, so he could log into the computer. He showed him what he was talking about. So I mean, he's hitting the ground running. So I think it would be great if we did that. So people can just put a face to the name.
That would be great. That way he can always pull up his phone, his town website, Mr. William.
Yep, yeah.
Well, he's also going to... He's also going to be getting a photo ID. Joel Johnson is going to work on getting that for him.
I think, oh, I thought he picked up his ID today.
Oh, maybe he did.
Yeah, this afternoon, I think he picked it up this afternoon.
I knew it was in process, so.
Now, what are we doing about a vehicle?
Right now, mileage, because I know there was some... The previous vehicle that was used, there would be, needs some repairs to be placed back on the road.
That's why I was asking. I knew that we had talked about that. They knew that the car was out of, kind of out of service. I didn't know what.
We should check on that next Monday at the department head meeting.
Yeah, I think, I think let's, yeah, see the status of it, see where we have available funds if there's... Because I know Phil had done a little digging as to what it would take to put it back on the road.
Oh, yes. Too much money.
I know it was fairly comprehensive.
It was going to take significant amount of money and work. And during the interview process for the building inspector spot, it was made clear that there was no vehicle included with the job.
So it'd be reimbursement for mileage.
Oh, yeah.
With the mileage.
Yep.
Yes, yes. I mean, at some point, if we were able and in a position to provide a vehicle, I'm sure we could consider it, but it's not an expectation, and it was made clear at the time of hiring.
Yeah. It's just nice from an enforcement standpoint when he's... When a car is pulling into somebody's yard, it'd be nice to have a vehicle that clearly states... Yeah, so that may be an option in the interim, because people do get apprehensive if a strange vehicle is pulling into their yard.
Absolutely. So maybe we look into, Susan's writing it down, absolutely. Get like a big magnet thing that you stick on the side of the car.
Didn't we have, did we add one? I thought we might have had one.
Is that what they put on the other car? It just said town.
I think it just said Town of Kingston and had the town seal.
Right.
Okay. So who is my partner in liaison affairs?
Sounded like Glenn Ball.
Sounded like Glenn had some interest with his experience in ordinances.
Well, I do. I think it's a natural fit. But I mean, if somebody else really wants to do it, that's perfectly okay.
Well, I would act, yes, he's right about that.
Okay.
A lot more going for the, you know, the building end of it and the town end of it.
I know more about construction than I want.
Okay.
But I mean, I'd be happy to fill in if someone, you know, we're not... Maybe when someone's away vacation, we get, you know, Papa and then make sure that things are going.
So I think for the consistency, I'd rather you be the primary point of contact for that on a daily basis. But if I happen to stop in and engage with him about anything, I'll just communicate that with you, Glenn.
Okay.
And so that you're aware of it as well.
So just to be clear, though, it wasn't my expectation to be in here every day, but certainly to have communication with him. In fact, I...
Correct.
He and I exchanged emails and voicemail options today. And I, not knowing how we were going to do it, I said, you know, if you've got any issues, at least in the interim, until we figure it out.
And I think that'd be good, as long as you could check in with him and be like, hey, everything going all right? Do you have anything that came up today we need to talk about?
Yeah.
Okay, good to go.
Okay.
Yeah. All right.
I guess on that vein, we had kind of briefly talked about a meeting to level set expectations.
Yes.
So...
And did we want, did we want that? I forget how we discussed how that would be structured.
We didn't structure it, but we haven't... We hadn't, didn't know if he was going to take the job, yada, yada, yada.
Right.
Maybe next Monday at the department head, we need to, we should have something.
I think, I think that would be a good opportunity, because that way we could bring in the other depart... Any department heads that are involved in inspections such as the fire chief, and we could ask the other inspectors to attend that.
And Tori as well.
And then we could, so we could actually...
At some point, you don't need to... Do you want them all here at the department head meeting?
Or do we want to do it differently?
We would, we would either, I think we would either need to do it just prior to the department head meeting or just after.
Yep.
I'd say we, as a group, need to meet first.
Yeah.
And how we want to put it together.
Yep.
And then meet with the department head. I don't know that Tori needs to be here for that specifically. At some point, yes, of course.
She's going to need to be downstairs in the office, so she won't be able to...
So yes, we probably all need to meet.
Okay, so then why don't, why don't...
Figure out what we want to do.
Why don't we discuss that during next week's department head meeting? So we can figure out exactly who we need at the table for that. And we'll have to create a time, because we want to do it during the day when the other employees that we need to be there are going to be working.
And, you know, within the next couple of weeks, we...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. But he's such a self-starter, he's gonna, I mean, he's got his, you know...
Yeah, he was, I mean, he already dove into, you know, a property that's going to have some difficulties and that he talked me about today.
I know. Ah, it's great.
Which would be good to go.
Do you want to attend the department head's meeting? Do you want him here?
Yeah, I think you should.
You're setting up a separate thing.
Yeah.
About, okay.
Now, the advantage of having someone experienced in the empty building zone is just what happened today with the decor. No question about it.
Yep.
All right. Okay, so our first appointment today, tonight, isn't scheduled until 7:00 PM, so we'll pass that until we get to then. Public comment. Rick Bressman is in the audience.
On the revised schedule that Susan gave us, she stuck in the website.
Oh, oh, you know, okay, yeah, you're right. Okay, yeah, I guess I did skip old business. Website upgrade, options, pricing?
Yeah, we had two Zoom meetings so far. We're not to a decision yet. The first one was with our current company. We did get a quote, but we need more information because they also said we're due for an upgrade, which might do the same thing. But because we're not paying...
Tammy was in that meeting, right?
Tammy and I sat in on that one. It was very brief. They didn't do a demonstration because we told them we liked Exeter's.
Yeah.
So I have a few more questions for them now. But since we're starting at zero, I don't know what the upgrade, slight upgrade cost is going to mean. So it might be, you know, the same. So we have some questions to be answered by them. And then today we sat in on another one from TownWeb. It's called Pretty Extensive.
It was. How much longer did you guys meet after I left the meeting?
It was well over an hour that we were...
Yeah, because I left at the hour mark.
Okay.
Right.
So we got a lot of information. He did not, we were expecting a quote from them tomorrow or Wednesday. So we can compare a little better and ask a few more questions.
Yep.
All right, great.
And so that's where we are.
Okay. So now, I guess, public comment.
I know in your list of things to do for 2024, certainly, one of these, I'm on this drinking water and groundwater trust fund. And I see how Plasto is now, is already tied in with the Manchester Water Works, the Willing Water all the way down there. And, I mean, Epping sits on a big aquifer. We've got a big aquifer. And at some point, we, hopefully, will be able to get that piece of land of Wayne's down there on the powwow and maybe sink a well and do some logistics and studies about how much water there would be to get at least a start. And hopefully that'll come to pass this year, because I know he took money out from the trust fund, $100,000, to buy that. And obviously, he's not been quite, a little bit missing in action on that. And, but hopefully that would come along, because it's, it really is important with PFAS stuff. And eventually, we're going to have to have some water in town. And, you know, it just, I just hope that maybe in 2024, something like that will actually come to pass so we could actually get that piece and then maybe start thinking about doing some well in the study down there and see what it has for potential for drinking water. That's all.
Rick? What, what were you, what $100,000 were you referring to? And what was that used for?
We, I think we voted to take $100,000 out of the trust fund.
Which trust fund?
The Land Acquisition Trust Fund, which is a good use of it, to purchase that piece. And so it's sitting there, and so...
So that was an action that the Select Board previously...
No.
Town, yeah, that one. So that was the purchase land, not use money for studying?
I've forgotten.
Right, that's all it could be used for. It'd have to be other money for infrastructure and well and so on and so forth. But it was...
We haven't connected well with the...
Right.
We haven't been able to pin down the landowner to specifically...
Okay, yeah.
Reconfirm the price we had agreed to, which is why we had asked the voters for the $100,000. So that has not been spent because we haven't kept to agreement with the landowner.
But hopefully it will be there when the need, when it actually comes to pass. So the money's already been voted.
Correct.
So hopefully it would stay out there because...
Yeah, so who is the last, who was the last one to really try to connect with the landowner?
Was Phil.
Okay, all right. So if we can...
He was on board.
Okay, so maybe we could put that during the department head meeting? We could just re-bring that up to Phil? And just give him a heads up prior to the meeting that, you know, where we want to ask of any type of status on that of where it's at?
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Yeah. I totally forgot about that.
So did I.
Any other public comment? For public comment number one. Okay. Let's see, we will go into new business. Official Town Communications. Question being kind of, what is now going to be our official newspaper for public notices now that the Carriage Town?
So that wasn't, when I asked for that agenda item, that wasn't necessarily the topic.
I didn't know what your topic was, but I...
But that's also a valid point.
Yeah.
Mine was more, and I know that, what the response is going to be, but I really think we need to think about an official Facebook Kingston page.
We have one.
You should do it in March after I'm gone.
We have one for the Select Board. We do not have one for the town, which is different.
No, no.
There's one that's not controlled by the town.
That's not, that's not official.
No, yeah, so there's a Public Works one.
There's a Public Works, there's, there's a...
There's a fire, police.
Right, but we don't have one from the town where, right, wrong, or indifferent, people use that as a form of communication. And we should offer options of them to get their information. And one of them should be, you know, and I've looked at Exeter, they have one. There's a lot of towns who have, and they use it for a lot of forms of communication. Public notices, which is, again, goes, kind of goes to the paper too. Like, where are we going to do public notices? But you can shut comments off, so you don't have to worry about the comment part if you don't want to monitor that. But I think we really need to think about...
What's going to take some work?
Of course, of course it will. And we need to decide what would go on there, right? Is it meeting agendas? Is it public notices? You know, what kind of information? And a lot of it would be duplicative of the website, and that's okay, because not everybody's going to go to the website. They're scrolling on Facebook, and if they can get their current information on Facebook, that, that's okay too.
It seems like the one we have could be kind of morphed into that.
Which, the selectmen's one?
Yeah, because it's barely used and, you know, it's been, we should be putting more stuff on.
Yes.
Adam's taking care of that, but we have to feed him the information.
Right. So we can have more, we can have a select few people who can add to it, you know, and we decide what goes on there. It's not going to be a general page where just, you know, stuff, we can decide the topics. But I think we need to think about that as another avenue of getting official information out.
Yeah, so I'm not, I'm not opposed to that. And I would just, like I said, I'll be done in March, and you can do whatever you want. But my recommendation would be that you really don't allow for commenting on it, because once you do that, people think that them complaining in the comment section, whether it be under pseudonyms or unverified names or people who don't even live in town, they then think that that becomes an official public forum where their complaints will be addressed and cataloged.
Absolutely.
So I would very limit any type of even commenting on any post or anyone posting anything to the page that's only, only, it's just informational only.
Yeah, right. And there could be disclaimers. And, you know, I'm happy to do a lot of research on a lot of different municipalities' Facebook pages and see what, what content they're putting and how they're managing it. But the ones that I've looked at don't allow comments. So, but what you can do is then people can then share that to their own thing, and then, then the comment can start, but it doesn't matter, because it's not on the official page.
Correct.
But it, it just allows for one more avenue of communication for people. And then we can also talk about the paper, because that's a whole other can of, yeah.
So I, yeah.
Paper wise, really, the paper that's right around here is the Eagle Tribune.
Our town had, Carriage Town circulation even now is 27,000 papers each week. The Eagle Tribune, including all their Massachusetts, is 8,800.
Well, I'm not saying, but...
It's not the paper of record for Southern New Hampshire.
Technically, we have to have a newspaper to put the different stuff in. So I'm assuming for now it would be the Eagle Tribune.
The question to ask is how, what, how do we meet the specifications of the law for public notices on planning, zoning, and anything else that needs hearing?
It turns out that for only a few items related to planning and zoning, are newspaper notices still required. With all the newspapers going out of business, state law has been changed, and the RSAs have changed. So for most planning and zoning notices, the website and then two additional places in town are legitimate and acceptable. In the case where it might be an item that has to go to the paper, the only one that really covers sort of everyone is the union leader, technically.
Right, statewide.
Yeah, I think it's, because if you look at all the ones that fall under Seacoast Online or the Eagle Tribune, Carriagertown News was the only one really centered that, really focused, you know, on really, that reached a lot of Kingston folks. I think everyone else is kind of, I think, I think everyone else is kind of split about where they get their news outside of that. And, but I think, so I think the union leader is probably the most effective approach.
Yes, Rob, Robin did some research, and she found also that the Eagle Tribune was a lot more expensive.
And the union leader?
Yeah.
Isn't that, that's probably why they lost a couple of counties.
Yeah. So that was one thing. I think we used them because they were kind of a, we had the same contacts for the Carriagertown and the Eagle Tribune, and it came in handy as a daily paper. So you think union leader?
If the rest of the board agrees, I think union leader is the most appropriate one that has the biggest reach.
And to be honest, in cases where even when we had, even when we had the Carriagertown News, because of its limited publication cycle, you know, once a week, if, if, I'm thinking of planning board now, sometimes we'd have to do something quickly, and there wouldn't be time to make the announcement at the right time. And so the fallback was the union leader as the backup.
And I would suggest that with the planning board notifications and stuff, the zoning board, that that be listed on the agenda, that public hearing notices will be published in such, such a place.
Yeah, and so where are the other, and where are the other? So we, obviously posting the town hall, where are the, do we have, what are our other physical locations? Post office and library, okay.
And it's usually posted here in town hall on the bulletin boards.
Yes. Yeah, so I think if we continue those physical sites and then move to the union leader as the, you know, the newspaper that we're using, I think, I think we'll be in good shape.
But our website should contain that information clearly, especially now that the Carriagertown...
Yeah.
Yes. And really, the newspaper only needs to be used in cases where a newspaper is required for notice.
Yeah.
There's no need to do it otherwise, because a website and then two additional places, physical places, it's all, is all that's required now.[1665.62] For most things.
And that online has got to be, because more of a problem.
Well, and, and I think that, I think that if you were to check the RSAs, you'd see that because the website is now allowed, it's allowed only if it's prominently on the, right at the front.
Yes.
You can't have, you can't require people to be digging for it. So it's got to be front facing, it's got to be, so as part of our website rebuild, I mean, that needs to be considered and built into.
Yeah, like official notices need to have like front and center.
They need to be right there.
And, and the ones that we've looked at, it is, it's very prominent. And, and I think that for this year, whoever's sitting up here, the communication way that, how, how Kingston is going to do their official communication really needs to be planned out and figured out for the year through all of the, all of the ways that we do it. Because we have to hit people who have newspapers, we have to do social media, we need to think about email, all of that, all of the forums.
We need a subgroup.
We do.
We need to work in subgroups to tackle this issue.
I agree.
And let's, let's plan on doing it right up to the elections.
Yeah.
Get through March.
Right, and I'll start doing some research on the Facebook stuff, but we really have to think about how we're doing all of the communication. With the website upgrade, you know, we're, the biggest push is making it user friendly and that you don't have to come into the Town Hall to do all of your business. You, you still can, but you don't have to, and we really have to think about that. Yes, yep, yep.
All right. So we are now at our seven o'clock appointment, so please come forward. So this is an appointment requested by Melissa Lanning, she's our library director, and Scott Bogle, Bogle? Bogle from Rockham Planning Commission.
So you didn't bring your own laptop for you? I, I wasn't sure how you were going to handle it. We, I put your, your presentation on a thumb drive that Adam has, if you need to use ours.
And so the topic of this appointment was discussing transportation options for the town of Kingston.
So we're just waiting for the presentation to get started. I'm here at Lori's request. I was doing research on transportation. I worked with Scott from the Rockham Planning Commission, he's a transportation expert. I just gathered some research like a good librarian. I've been doing a lot of research to figure out how to get people around. My interest specifically is to get people to the library, obviously. There are a lot of people who probably want our services, and I think we can, we can, by getting them to the library or maybe getting out to them with transportation, that's important. We ran an age-friendly community survey with Rockham Planning Commission this past spring, and the big finding was transportation, people want transportation options. So I decided to do a little research into this. So if you can go on to the next slide, please. So the concerns raised by the survey were there is lack of transportation, public transportation for all ages and citizens. It's costly, both public and some people, the cost of gas could be prohibitive for getting around. People are having difficulty getting to doctor's appointments, to the grocery store, to the library, to the rec center, and other services. We also found another big concern was communication, so it's kind of interesting, that's what you were talking about when I walked in. But especially with our older adults in the community, they have lack of information in general, but specifically about what is currently available in terms of transportation options. I do want to point out that after this survey, the library put together a website specifically for older adults, and that does list some transportation options, like the hospital has an option, Vic Geary Center has an option. So if people are interested in that, you can go to the library website and under, I think it's under adults, it lists older adult options. So some of that is there. But it, it isn't robust, and we definitely need more options. There are also concerns of older adults about driving at night or in the wintertime. So specifically for the library, my interest, it, it affects people coming to our wide variety of programs that we offer. So, next slide, please. So here is one of the questions from the survey, and you can see having transportation options once people stop driving is the biggest concern that, that people had there. And Scott can speak to this, this issue if there are questions. So you can see that it was a major, major concern. Next slide, please. So I looked at the master plan of Kingston from 2007, that's the last master plan that I saw, I believe it is the most recent one. And there was a specific section that, or two sections that talked about transportation, and I don't know if this was looked at at all since that time, but I did want to point out that the vision for accessible transportation is something that has not yet been realized. At one time, there was public transportation, and talking with Scott, he had told me that that was something that was grant funded and that ended, and that went away. So what I pulled from the plan is Kingston Planning Board believes that to have prosperous and livable communities, we must have a transportation system that provides for the safe and efficient movement of people and goods. And also, we must move toward a more balanced transportation system, which makes appropriate use of other modes of travel to meet our needs, such as bus, rail, pedestrian, and bicycle modes for moving people, and freight rail for moving goods. So that is part of the master plan, I just wanted to point that out. Next slide, please. So these are the current options in Kingston, and as I, oh, there's the, the link to the library's website. So we're Kingston-liberty.org/seniors.html with some of the options that we have. So Rockham Nutrition Wheels on, Meals on Wheels, Vic Geary Senior Center gives rides, and they're in Plastow. They have some capacity to bring seniors shopping and to medical appointments. Also, 360 Degrees Seniors helps seniors, that's a low-cost transportation service, but it still has a cost. Trip Link has some volunteer service with federal funding, but it's limited to five free rounds of trips per month. And then Liberty Livery is another low-cost transportation option for us. Next slide. So within Scott's report to us, he had a very thorough report that he presented to the steering committee just last week or a couple of weeks ago, and these are some of the, the recommendations that he made. Fixed route public transportation will likely never be practical in Kingston, and that's what we found for all communities similar to ours. One option that I explored, I joined a couple of transportation committees, one of which involves people throughout New England, including Vermont and Maine. Volunteer transportation is very popular, especially on the Maine seacoast, and I'm trying to remember which town, maybe Portland, I think it's a smaller town, has a very good program with volunteer assistance. We have a, an organization called TASK, which is Transportation Assistance for Seacoast Citizens. At first, we were told that they weren't willing to come to Kingston, they are in Brentwood and other neighboring towns. I actually met Carol, I'm forgetting her last name. Carol Gulla from TASK at an Exeter Chamber of Commerce meeting last week, and she said that she is willing to work with Kingston to find options, especially if we can find volunteers in our community. The biggest problem that they have is getting volunteer drivers, and if we came in without volunteer drivers, it's a burden. But if we come in with volunteer drivers, we can help them out. There would probably be a low cost for Kingston, just like paying into the Vic Geary Center, we'd be paying into volunteer transportation service to help them with some overhead. She and I have not discussed costs or, or anything like that yet, but it seems like a good option for us. Other areas have something called Ready Rides, and there are Caregivers of Greater Dairy. There's also a senior taxi voucher program that can be explored, and a municipal transportation improvement fund that I'm going to have Scott speak towards later because I, I don't know much about it, but there is money available for this kind of thing. Next slide, please. So VDP, Volunteer Driving Program, to me, based on my research and talking to people in the area, seems like the most viable option for Kingston, and it actually does seem like something that's, that's doable in terms of money, I don't think it's going to be cost prohibitive. And I do know that there are people in our community now willing to, to volunteer to drive. We have age-friendly community forums immediately after our survey, and people immediately came up and said, I'd be willing to drive, I think we had three people at that time. So I know there are people out there who are willing to do this. Experts at the, this is the organization, I've been going to their meetings online. Northern New England Connects Volunteer Transportation Meeting said the prime barrier to these VDPs is the lack of drivers. And, yeah, we didn't even ask people, they just came up at the meetings, as I mentioned. So I think if we do an ask through Facebook, through the library, and we can come up with other ways to, to sign people up, I think there are people out there. Next slide, please. So TASK serves, currently serves Brentwood, East Kingston, Exeter, Greenland, Hampton, Hampton Falls, Kensington, Northampton, Ryse, Seabrook, and Stratum, they're really close. And Carol has agreed to come and talk to me, and I'm sure she would come to talk to the, the board and the town about what she would need, and, and we could communicate with her about what we need. Next, please. Other options, so I know that Paul Butler has talked to the Brentwood Senior Citizens Center, they have a van, and Paul, I believe, has gotten permission from them to borrow the van. I think it only holds eight to 10 people, and it's not our van, so we can use it sometimes, but that's not an option for, for a permanent solution. We can also see if Vic Geary can share its van, maybe we even want to purchase our own van. The advantage of buying into or offering drivers to the other service is that they already have insurance, they already have everything in place. If we buy our own, we're going to have to look into all of, of that and cover the costs for that. The other option besides moving, or the other problem besides moving people is things like getting food to people who need it, or getting people to telehealth appointments. I had somebody come into the library the other day, and luckily she could drive herself, but she didn't know how to set up her telehealth appointment. She needed somebody to help her. So people to, to get help need to come someplace that can help them. Or maybe it involves getting a librarian or somebody else who has expertise into their home, but there's still a transportation component there, so that's another issue. So we have been meeting social service, a group of recreation, human services to talk about this issue. So rock has been involved, local church, the thrift shop, we've been talking about some of these needs that people have, but I really think that the transportation issue is one that needs a more permanent type of, of committee, so I wanted to bring that before this board. Next slide, please. And then the issue of communication comes up here again. So here are some ideas I had for getting out information, so library and town websites, flyers in the tax bill, flyers at the clerk's office, cable channel, just flyers in windows, the library newsletter, we've, we've got about 1,000 people signed up for that. And I sent to Lori an example of a town newsletter that I thought was, was well done and, and could serve as a model for us for getting out information about transportation and other issues. Next, please. So consider forming an advisory board, these are, these are my ideas for looking forward. Consider beginning a list of potential volunteer drivers, and the library is happy to, to help with that, as well as any kind of committee. I recommend meeting with TASK, TASK and Carol to see what her ideas are. We welcome you at the library to hold meetings and community forums. We felt like the age-friendly community forum worked really well for us. We had 54 people show up for the first one, which was, which was a pretty good, pretty good group, and I think those people are, are very interested in, in helping, so that would be a good core group to start with. And I'm going to talk to other librarians, I know the librarian in Fremont is having the same thoughts, how, how to get people to his library as well. So I think using our net, the networks that are already in place is important. Next, please. Thank you.
So I don't know if Scott has anything to add, or if you have questions for I or Adam.
I don't have a presentation per se, just adding on to a couple of the points that Melissa made. First of all, I'd, I'd say that through this series of age-friendly community assessments we've done over the past two years, it's really been clear what, what a key role the libraries play in a lot of the communities as a community center, in communities that don't have a, a freestanding community center. Eric Abney in Fremont, the library director there, as Melissa mentioned, was a, a champion in their work, and we've been working with him on trying to get a volunteer driver program to expand service into Fremont as well. But as Melissa mentioned, the, one of the questions that we asked in the Needs Assessment Survey was what concerns you most about growing older in your community? And across the board in the eight communities where we did these surveys, the number one concern was how will I get where I need to go once I stop driving? There were 72% of the 206 respondents to the survey here in Kingston that identified that. Almost all of the survey respondents currently drive, but are very concerned about what happens once they need to give up their keys. And with a, a growing older adult population, this is something that we're trying to work on in various communities. RPC actually helped start the TASK volunteer driver program back in 2006, and we've worked with them closely over the years. If TASK is willing to expand their geographic service area to pick up Kingston, I think that would be a great option. As Melissa referenced, the van that serves the Vic Geary Center is operated by Rockham Nutrition Meals on Wheels program. That vehicle serves Plastow, Kingston, East Kingston, Newton, Brentwood, and I think one other community. The primary purpose of that van is to bring seniors to the Vic Geary Center, to the Congregate Meal Site, and for social activities. But they do have some additional time on the van that they use to bring people shopping or to bring people to medical appointments. I think there's an opportunity to just work to get the word out better about the availability of that service. That's another one of the key findings from all eight of the communities is that very frequently, older residents just aren't avail, aren't aware of what services are already available in town. And I think that's more the case now as more information tends to go out via the internet. We had a question on the survey that named, I think, a dozen different kind of sources of information, from social media and email to Town Hall, the library, the newspaper, WMUR, the radio. Almost a quarter of the respondents in Kingston didn't list any internet-based sources of information. And I think that will become more of an issue for the town and for a bunch of towns in central Rockham County with the Carriertown News folding now. But, so I think that there's an opportunity to make sure that everybody's aware of the existing van service that Meals on Wheels provides. But then, working to get volunteer driver program coverage here in town would be also a very good option. TASK, and really all of the volunteer driver programs in the state have challenges in recruiting and retaining drivers. That was especially the case during COVID, because a lot of the drivers were themselves older adults who were concerned about exposure. That has sort of, the volunteer driver numbers have rebounded to a great degree. But, you know, if Kingston were to approach TASK with six or eight volunteers that were willing to drive Kingston residents, I think there would probably be a, a good chance we could get TASK to, to pick up Kingston. The Transportation Improvement Fund that Melissa referenced actually has to do with enabling legislation that the legislature passed back in 1999 under RSA 261153 that allows municipalities to charge a supplemental vehicle registration fee of up to $5 that can populate a local transportation improvement fund. And those dollars can be used for road maintenance, for senior transportation, for intersection improvements, pretty much any transportation use. We, a number of years ago, did a, a survey looking at acceptability of different transportation revenue mechanisms, and this did better with the respondents than most others in that it's a, it's a well-understood nominal fee of $5 a year if you have one car, $10 a year if you have two cars. You don't have to do math and figure out how many gallons of gas do I use in a year, and therefore, how much would a couple of cents on the dollar in the gas tax be? But the resources are also locally controlled. The decision of whether to adopt the fee, how much of a fee to charge up to $5 is totally at local discretion, and then the use of the proceeds is at local discretion. So it's a tool to fund transportation needs outside of the property tax, if the town was interested to pursue that. Rockham Planning Commission worked with the town of Exeter about a dozen years ago when they established this fee. I think they initially established it at $3, and they used that for their senior transportation program. So they support TASK, they support Meals on Wheels, and get some. and get some additional service from Meals on Wheels. They have a senior taxi voucher program. And they also use some of that to support the Coast Transit Service, which serves a number of towns closer to the seacoast. So, that's a mechanism.
Scott, what's the, do you know the RSA number offhand on that?
I believe it's 261153, Section 4. What's that? There are only a few. I can't go very far beyond that.
Okay, thanks, thank you.
Melissa mentioned Liberty Livery, which is a cab company, I believe based in Exeter. I actually saw the owner of that recently. I think that they have been having a hard time finding drivers, so their capacity is fairly limited, and they're a market-rate service. 360SHS, I believe, is based in Bedford. And is also, I think they're primarily a home care service, but they will do rides at something closer to market rate. So those are options. There are other statewide organizations that provide rides as well. For example, the DAV and the VA Hospital will provide rides for medical service for veterans. American Cancer Society will provide rides for folks getting cancer treatment. But many of these services that are statewide, one, they serve very specific populations, and they have pretty limited capacity. And in some cases, you're paying a market rate cost for that. TASK will accept donations, but does not charge for those rides. And for vulnerable older adults, that can be a helpful feature.
Do either of you know how much TASK charges their communities that they serve?
They don't, last I knew, they don't have a set funding formula. I want to say Hampton Falls contributes $500 a year, because there's historically been relatively few trips from Hampton Falls. I think Exeter contributes closer to $10,000 a year, because the bulk of TASK's rides have been from Exeter. So, I can't say exactly what TASK would ask for as a starting amount of money from Kingston. I think that would need to be a conversation. I imagine they might be willing to start for a fairly limited contribution and test and see what the demand is like.
Well, it seemed like, from the slide that you showed, most of the towns around us are served by them. It looked to me that way.
Yeah, they have, the closest towns that they serve here are Brentwood, East Kingston, and those were fairly recent additions for TASK. They initially served the immediate seacoast communities, and really just went as far west as Exeter and Kensington. We've been working with several volunteer driver programs, trying to kind of fill in a gap running down the 125 corridor. TASK serves many of the communities east of that. Community Caregivers of Greater Dairy serves a number of communities west of that. You've got ReadyRides Volunteer Program that serves quite a few Stratford County towns, and they have dipped as far south as Epping and picked up Epping, although I think they're having a hard time recruiting enough volunteers there. And then there's Greater Salem Caregivers, and we're trying to get Salem Caregivers reconnected with Plastow to reestablish volunteer service in Plastow.
Some of my concerns is that, these types of roles, I feel, obviously the world has changed, but these types of roles in assisting the aging community used to be covered by families staying closer, engagement in either faith-based organizations, whether it be churches or other philanthropic endeavors, organizations, Rotary, Veterans Clubs, whatever these are. And I have a concern that every time state, local, federal government gets involved in something, they make it less effective. And I don't mind championing for private organizations to continue in handling this stuff, but I think part of the big breakdown we have, and the other thing that used to help is neighbors actually used to know each other. You know, now you live in a neighborhood, sometimes neighbors have never even talked to each other, met each other. So, and I hate when, I see that with the state's welfare program and the changes that they've made through legislation over the years, where now they mandate that the town has to give it to them or provide it to them. There's no buy-in anymore to actually make the community better for these people. So normally, you used to participate in a church, and then if you came on hard times, that church would help you out, because you had buy-in to that community. And I just, I hate to the state, local, or federal governments' ticket that just becomes a, "Well, this is something you kind of have to give me now, and I don't actually have to buy in and contribute." I would rather be, I would rather us be a sounding board to advocate for these other, because we have organizations in town, we have multiple veterans clubs, we have a Rotary, we have, or I'm sorry, Alliance Club, those type of things. I would rather advocate for their involvement and their support of these programs, because I think those buy into the community and get more involvement, and actually make the community a little better. So, that's just some of my reservations on it. I just, I see the further we allow the government to say, "Yeah, we're going to take care of this now", there's no longer a buy-in for anyone to actually make the community stronger and create that sense of community, and nobody engages with each other.
So I think I'm a little confused by what you mean government, because from what I'm hearing, these are kind of, these aren't government-run programs?
Both are nonprofits. Actually, to your earlier point, TASK TASK was actually started by a group of ministers in the seacoast, and we came in to give them a hand in getting their 501(c)(3) designation and getting some pilot funding through the United Way. So it was very much envisioned to fill the role that you're talking about, with the private sector, a nonprofit group, supporting local folks.
And with our own volunteers, so TASK would would depend, would expect Kingston to provide Kingston volunteers to drive? So it is kind of filling, the neighbors helping neighbors kind of thing?
Yeah, I guess my concern comes at when we start talking about, oh, and then we're going to, if we enter into a contract where it's, "Well, we've paid money", and people are like, "Well, I don't need to volunteer, we've paid, the town's committed money, we don't need to step up and actually do anything. The town's paid money, we expect the service."
Okay, I wasn't, I wasn't getting that from that, but yeah, okay.
I mean, it might be as a matter of testing the program. Perhaps a nonprofit service group in town would be willing to put up an additional, an initial contribution to TASK in order to have a pilot project and test and see how many folks in Kingston used the service.
Yeah, and because like I said, I would, you know, you talked about like the, I'm not really a big fan of just tacking on another user fee for vehicles, because then it's, I would rather, I would rather us work in a way that encourages people to volunteer to be the drivers versus them saying, "I paid my five bucks, I'm not doing anything else."
So Melissa, I think the ask is from us, if we form some sort of group that's really going to do more research and come up with those answers, and see if we can get volunteers and what options are best for the town? Because there might, 72% of people say they want transportation options, but we might not have the buy-in from the community that are willing to help with that, those options.
I do want to add that the survey was done through the library, so many of the respondents are library patrons. So I do wonder who we're not reaching, who may not, who may be out there and not driving or homebound. And so I think we probably did not hit the population that maybe needs this most. And it's worth looking into, I think.
And I do look at the library as one of those, you know, a philanthropite-type organization that builds community. So I want, just because you have this connection to that, I want to say I view the library as one of those positive organizations that has been fostering that.
So I, I'm talking about the ask. I've made this connection with Carol, we have the survey results. I don't want to act as library director to, for just my interest in the library, because I think it's a bigger issue. So the ask is, can I get together with you to look at this issue further? And to invite Carol to speak with a committee who's looking at this issue and discuss some of the things, like what you talked about? And maybe, maybe we get the local veterans organizations to chip in? But I think it's an issue that should be, should be looked at, and town government should be involved in the looking.
So, you know, forming a task force, or whatever we want to call it, for, like to do research, or come up with? Right, I mean, it is a town problem, and it's something that, you know, the residents, a lot of residents care about it.
It's going to get bigger.
It is going to get bigger, and if we start looking at it now and come up with well-established transportation options four, five, 10 years from now, right? Then it, then we've done the groundwork and grown it along the way, so.
So, I feel comfortable that, do the two of you feel comfortable coming up with the language you want to do to make some sort of announcement? And the two of you can figure out exactly what you're looking to put together for some? Don't say the word "committee", because I don't think, we don't want meeting minutes.
It's a task force, it's a transportation task force to look for the research, the needs of the transportation needs in Kingston. Yes, yeah. And then we can figure out, you know, how many people and how many, you know, hopefully we get a lot of people who are willing to help with the research and figure out options.
Okay, I'm good with that, any opposition to it? Okay, go forward.
Thank you.
All right, concluding that appointment, we are back to our items under new business. We did have a request through Human, to Human Resources for some information. This was in the form of an email where they were asking for information that wasn't necessarily, I mean, they did not like Human Resource Director response through guidance of us. We said that a lot of these are, a lot of this is interrogatory-style questioning and not exactly an ask for public records. But then they posted to social media that, "This is what I asked the town, and everyone should submit a right-to-know request", but most of this is, most, yes, yeah. They, they said, "Yeah, if anyone, if anyone wants answers to outstanding questions, I recommend they make an official request under New Hampshire's Right to Know Law 91A", but they didn't actually make an ask of specific documents that would be subject to 91A. They essentially wanted the Human Resources to compile information out there and provide, direct her in how to do her job and work, and provide them with specific information. And then they asked a series of questions that I weren't really under the Human Resource Director purview to provide. They were really board discussion questions. So, I will go over these, they did officially ask for them, and we, you know, I thought it was most appropriate, we put it on the agenda, because I'm sure there are people that may want some answers to this. But, so, they specifically asked for the number of full-time employees and part-time employees by department for the 2022, 2023, and proposed 2024 budget cycles. Paula, do we don't, did it, do we have our part-time, full-time mapped out by that, by department? You're going to have, could you come forward? So I'm asking forward Paula Mahoney, our Finance Director and Human Resources Director. So this is one of the items, I think she just, she wanted this, but you have to compile it and put it together for her.
I said I needed some time.
It wasn't a record that just existed in a format that she was just requesting access to. Right now, I know you're in the middle, we have an audit through New Hampshire Retirement System, we're still in the middle of kind of the budget throws, so.
Quick question, when, under, under request for right-to-know, we don't, we're not obligated to create documents that don't exist.
We are absolutely not obligated. But I will say, this is, this is information related to our ongoing budget. So, she was more than willing to get it, but she just expressed the fact that, "I'm busy with a lot of other things, it's just going to take me some time to get this together for you." So, so I know you responded back that you're putting that together, so we'll be able to get a number on that. The corresponding total salary amounts for 2022, 2023, and 2024. I know, because we don't have that, you directed her, you directed her to a link that has the official town reports, which allocates that. So I mean, if she wants to come view that, those reports here, they're more than willing to, or you sent the links directly to those town reports.
Yep.
The other one was, they asked, they wanted to know the number of current employment vacancies for the town, and average number of days it took to fill authorizations in both 2022 and 2023. I know you did, I directed you to answer this question, that currently we had, I believe, one employment vacancy.
One vacancy right now.
One vacancy, in that we don't track the number of days it takes to fill a vacancy, so that's information we didn't have available. Another question they asked is, they wanted to know the number of town-owned vehicles issued to employees for personal use, which, the way that question's answered, nobody's issued a vehicle for personal use. They are issued vehicles for official use, and there could be ancillary personal uses that have been authorized by the town. And to my knowledge, we have our issued vehicles that go home is the police chief, the fire chief, the director of public works. There's the head detective of the police department, who has to respond to call-outs and stuff like that. He's authorized one of the vehicles to take home, one of the undercover vehicles. The public works department, I know they have one of the trucks where the, essentially second-in-command under Phil, who also responds out to emergencies and on-call needs for the towns, and only lives just over the town line, so he has a take-home vehicle as well. But I'm sure there are ancillary uses, if somebody's stopping at the store going to and from work. And I know the fire chief, he's very open and honest. He has to pick up his son from school and drop him off, but he's a salaried employee. It's not like he's going into overtime or being billed the dish that he's on all the time, and having their ability to respond directly to an emergency is a benefit to the community.
Right, and the use of these vehicles by town employees who have them is not really for personal use. As you said, there are occasions where they do get used for that, but it's primarily for the benefit of the town, and to have these, these particular employees be responsive to town needs, mostly in the areas of health and safety.
Correct. And then, so, follow-up to that question was, "How such benefit was considered/weighed in determining equitable and competitive compensation scales?" I can say, the majority of this board member was not involved in some of the department head contracts that were issued to the previous things. I'm sure it was taken into consideration, and in comparison, I know most towns that I know of, the police chief, the fire chief, and director of public works have take-home vehicles for the department heads. And I'm, and I know it was, I can say, when the Wage Salary Working Group, they talked, you know, I don't think it specifically came up to a dollar amount to any employee that's assessed that, because I think it's kind of based on different authorized uses and how it's, and how it's used. But, you know, I don't, I don't think we ever put a dollar amount on that, under the pay, under the pay scale study. So the next question was, "Under the new plan to abandon merit increases in favor of COLA adjustments for all", that's a blanket statement before a series of questions. So I think what, a confusing thing there is that for the past three years, the COLA adjustments are not replacing merit-based increases. For the past three years, employees have been receiving a cost-of-living adjustment in addition to a pay performance scale, so they had been receiving both. And at the request of the Budget Committee during, at the end of last year's budget season, they asked that we work on a, they did not feel comfortable with the subjectiveness of the pay performance schedules and how they were being implemented and done, and they wanted to see a better system in place so that employees were not granted merit raises based on the potential effectiveness of their leadership and those, the subjective nature of performance evaluations. So that's why that whole working group came to fruition. So, under that, under that question, there's a series of sub-questions. "What happens if an employee is not a satisfactory employee?" Well, the COLA adjustment, a cost-of-living adjustment, is not a raise based off of performance. So a cost-of-living adjustment would happen naturally. My bigger answer to this is that if you have an employee who is not satisfactory, you should be getting them to the point where they are satisfactorily performing their duties, or you should be helping them to the door. B, are performance evaluations still delivered? And they asked how often. They're currently have been done once a year, and that's, and I can tell you, I am not a big fan of performance evaluations, because if you are waiting till the end of the year to guide somebody in their performance and their work ethic and what they're doing, you are an ineffective leader and you're not doing your job. And many times evaluations, especially in the public sector, have been proven ineffective, especially when they're tied to certain merit-based raises or satisfactory performance for union negotiations, because if you have weak leadership, they will always grade up just to get people to the point where they're getting their raise anyway. And that if they do not, what, and then what happens is when you do have a subpar employee that begins having performance issues and they've been kind of just pushed over the line for years, you don't have the documentation in place. The first thing that comes up in any arbitration is, well, look, here's all my glowing performances that somebody pencil-whipped through and didn't take time to effectively do. So I gotta tell you, I've, I've found performance evaluations to be a waste of time. You should be more concerned on developing effective leadership and mentorship within the ranks of the community that are properly supervising employees. So that'd be my answer to that. Next question, will an underperforming employee still get a full COLA adjustment even if he or she is on a performance improvement plan? Yes, they would get a COLA adjustment, that would be appropriate in there. But anyone wants the pay-salary matrix, if, once everything's been done and it's fully adopted, there are step, there would be steps within that thing, within that matrix. If an employee had currently not met the satisfactory terms of their employment evaluation, they would not be eligible for the, for the step. And if they are not eligible at the time, it has to, they should be being placed on some type of performance improvement plan and they wouldn't be eligible for that step increase until they have satisfactory, gotten to the point where they are performing where they need to. But ultimately, I said, at the end of the, at the end of the day, if somebody's not performing, you need to get them where they need to be, or you need to, you should tell them to update their resume, because you never know when an opportunity may arise. And then finally, the last question is, what if an employee is already at or near the top of a pay scale in a newly adopted compensation matrix and there is no room to give full COLA increase? Are there salary caps in place for all employees? And the goal of the, the wage-matrix study was that every job did have a cap. Now, the town, moving forward with cost-of-living adjustments, the town could have that, have that job classification, they could have the entire thing moved by the cost-of-living adjustment, but that's gonna, we didn't get that far in the whole thing of full implementation. But there are a bunch of different opportunities and decisions that, you know, the future board will have an opportunity to make, and it's whether or not they move that, it could be an annual decision of whether or not the whole pay scale moves or what it's tied to, whether it's tied to the Consumer Price Index, or it's tied to some other. And one of the other options that's available is if you do cap out, I've seen some entities and communities that, say you're at the top of the pay scale and there's a one, or two percent COLA or four percent COLA, whatever it is, and that pay doesn't move, they would get, sometimes they get a stipend equivalent to four percent, but it does not compound and move their salary cap up. So there are a bunch of different decisions that can be made, as, as I know that the wage, the wage, major, wage, wage and matrix study working group moves forward to bring further information to town. So there's a lot of decisions that haven't been made on that, so I don't think it's an accurate answer to give at this time.
Yeah, we also looked at longevity clauses, that may come into play at some point. But that's still too soon to determine.
So I just want, I, like I said, I felt these were, you know, when Finance, Human Resources Director, she brought this up to us immediately when she got this recommendation, I just, I felt they were questions that should not have been put on her shoulders to answer. I felt it was more appropriate the board want to answer, and I wanted us to do it in public to discuss them, because there are definitely questions that I think a lot of people are asking as they're talking about anything that's in the budget.
And since a very specific individual made this request, at least the first one did, I don't know if there have been others following, would it be appropriate, I realize that you've said it now on camera, but the minutes will reflect it as well. Would it be worth providing the minutes when they're ready to that individual?
I think it would be very beneficial to provide to them a copy of the official meeting minutes record that now will exist.
And that could serve as a beneficial response to the questions.
Yep. Any other input on that, or did I cover it?
No, you know, I think it's really important to make sure that just everybody realizes that COLA is cost-of-living allowance and we can get a zero or one other percentage that the select board chooses to move forward, right? Whereas the wage study is a, that's a pay increase independent of COLA. And it's, COLA's not merit-based, and I think that confusion led to a lot of these questions at the end.
Correct, and I think there was that assumption that it was being replaced, but they were actually getting both at the time and we were trying to reduce the subjectiveness of the others. Okay, so that, any other, oh, we have the uncollectible funds policy under new business. Thank you, Paula.
Yes, there were just a few changes on that. They, in the first paragraph, they added that, you know, we accept personal business checks, credit debit cards, cash and ACH, right? So a little bit of clarity. And then the last paragraph on the repeat offenses, it was rather lengthy and the select board was very intertwined in that process, and they removed the select board out of that. So it's really with the town clerk and the town administrator to, to handle this process and take it off of the select board's plate to have to deal with that.
You're welcome.
It was Tammy and Susan who decided that.
I read through it when I got it in the email today, if anyone needs more time on it. Okay. I'm okay with the language, that's enough. Okay, so take a motion to adopt that. Okay, first and second, further discussion, all those in favor? Aye, no opposed. So that covers our new business. So under board business, our meeting calendar for 2024 and 2025 in the packets.
Yeah, if you don't see any glaring issues with that, I just wanted it done ahead of time to be posted yet.
The holiday ones, it's too soon to determine, it would depend on what Melissa would want.
Right. So there are some question marks there, there always are when we get closer.
Yeah, but it looks fine to me otherwise.
Yep. All right, so no changes on that, Susan can move forward with that. The town report, select board page in the packets.
Everybody's taking a look, I think, I've got a few suggestions to work with. And I've got a picture to go with it.
So, yeah, if everyone's good with that, I think we, we all had a little bit of input there, which a couple of, a couple of changes. But I think that goes good moving forward. And we wanted to discuss ideas for the cover.
Yeah, I didn't have any, anything to, to offer, I'm waiting to see if anybody does. I have an idea for the dedication and I have one memorial, the cover can just be a nice picture, or I don't know if you've got another idea.
I'd like to maybe, let's think about this one before we make a decision.
The dedication, your idea, I'm not a, but I didn't want to talk about that in the public.
Okay.
The memorial, I think it's appropriate to include, that's the Lane Van Dyke.
Why don't we have a quick non-public at the end? Public comment number two. Hi, nothing? Okay. Rick, you're already up here once.
Vote early and vote often tomorrow.
Chris, I got one thing on the board business.
And town hall is closed tomorrow.
Yes, town hall is closed tomorrow, closed at five tonight, and they're opening at noon on, on Wednesday.
Wednesday will be open.
Yeah, we'll, we'll be, but the town clerk's office. So we'll close, go back to board business.
Yeah, I just, I was looking back at some open notes, have we ever heard back? And I asked Susan on the Lone Tree situation, what's happening with that?
I was looking for the videos, I know that there was a request for the videos to go with the meeting.
Yeah, Huddy had requested some follow-up information, so Susan has pulled up, because I believe council wanted to review. Obviously, council has the official meeting minutes, but council also wanted to review the taped, the taped meetings that, where that was addressed, so she could see it directly, anything that was communicated that may not have been captured in the meeting minutes to see if anyone's advocating for that either way.
I sent her the, the select board video today, and I had trouble finding the planning board one, and I just spoke to Adam, he located it.
Okay. But I think once, once she's able to review that and give any comments based off of that, I think we'll either have to have a meeting with her, with us, or at least with us to discuss her comments regarding moving forward on that.
But we have not been back to the location to see if there are people still living there, et cetera?
No, because we wanted to, following council's guidance, we just wanted to make sure she's involved in any decision we make about any follow-up moving forward. So, all right, so we closed, had additional board business, correspondence, applications, purchase orders. I think everyone's had a chance, could I just go through those two folders just on the record? I think we've all had a chance to review them, I don't think there was anything, most, can I get the orange one, Susan?
Yeah. No, I didn't do it.
No, I didn't do it.
Purple one you didn't do?
Really?
Oh.
I thought I brought it down.
You did.
Okay, the first one is here, we just had a lot of land in the public burial, pine growth cemetery for everyone to sign off on. There were no issues with that. We did have a application for property tax credits for.
I think I ended up with two veterans there and one elderly.
This one's an elderly exemption, which everyone is in there within the limits, so that one's appropriate as well. So that's Seven Half Moon Lane. Sign off on that, it's been reviewed. We have a veterans' tax credit where they have the appropriate documentation in here, that's regarding 57 Hunt Road. So it looks like everything is appropriate for that one as well. We have another veterans' tax credit for 14 Bent Grass Circle, and they have all the appropriate documentation and qualifications for that. This was the local funds reimbursement. So, did you guys see, you guys got the orange one?
Yes.
Correct? Okay, just double-check it. So, all right, we've taken care of that. We need to do the approval of meeting minutes, both public and non-public, January 8th, 2024. All right, any further discussion on those? All those in favor? Aye? Any opposed? None. All right, and just, I'm not on this agenda meeting, on this agenda, I don't know if it was on the official post one, it said 2023.
This is what happens when you have a new year.
So obviously, again, voting is tomorrow for primary day, so I know we will all be super excited to be there all day. And I hope there's not as many write-ins as people are advocating for, because we'll be counting forever. But other business, next meetings, January 29th, that's our daytime meeting that we do to meet with all the department heads at 9:00 AM. And then the next meeting after that is going to be February 5th, 6:30 PM. In between those two meetings will be our deliberative session. So that will be an exciting day. I, based off of social media, I anticipate more participation than usual.
That's right.
Some of them, maybe it'd be to tell me what people think about me, but we'll cross that bridge when we get there.
Just a detail on the, on the election tomorrow, polls are open from eight to eight. It's at the Swayze Gym, in case anybody needs to know. And just a word to anybody who might be watching, that the town's new building inspector slash code enforcement officer started this morning. And that's a full-time slot that we have filled, and he hit the ground running. He's already, already out working and, and working with the administrative office downstairs to get things organized and to work through the backlog of some of the permits and some of the code enforcement issues that have piled up. And so we're, we're looking forward to, to him doing good work down there.
Yep, he does have office hours set already. I think it was eight to nine AM and two to four PM every day, and he'll be there, except Friday, building's closed in the afternoon, but.
Right, right, and he, so he set the middle of the day aside for him to be out and about doing inspections or doing enforcement or whatever he needs to do. In, it's also, also an understanding, and I discussed this with him this morning, that, that, you know, on certain, on, on any particular day, if he, during that time that he's supposed to be out doing things, if he doesn't have any specific things to do, he, he'll be in the office to, you know, to catch up on whatever work he needs to do here. And of course, if he's here, and if, and if public comes in, certainly he'd be accessible outside of the set office hours, so, anyway.
So we are probably going to take a motion here in just a moment to move into non-public for anyone watching. There, it will not come back to rebroadcast when we come back into public session, but the only action we plan on taking is whether or not to seal the meeting minutes, if appropriate, from that non-public should we enter. So I would take a motion to move into non-public session per 91, RSA 91A3, Roman numeral two, I believe it's going to be section A. C, C, okay, well, but it's discussion, discussions of an individual. All right, we'll take our roll call vote, Ellie. Glenn, I'm a yes. Check.